Good evening, everybody. This is the Board of Selectmen's Regular Meeting for Wednesday, March 7, 2018. The meeting is being shown live on Channel 9 as we speak and it's also will be recorded and shown throughout the week on Channel 9. Also, if anybody's going to record this or either voice or video, just need to let me know, it's not a problem, but, okay? Let's begin with the Pledge of Ouieties.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, while we're all standing, I would like to mention the passing of Keith Angus. I remember Keith as a young man intended at Dyton, Rehoboth, and his father Mel. Keith grew up on Route 44, Winthrop Street, and his father operated Custom Linocraft for many, many years. And I would request a moment of silence for Keith Angus, please.
Okay. Our first order of business, which always is a good one, is to appoint Michael Marshall as a full-time police officer. So, you got the floor, Chief.
Got that podium again.
This is really nice, I like this. Okay, thank you, Board. Here tonight to make another recommendation to the Police Department for a full-time officer. Back a couple of weeks ago, maybe a month ago, we interviewed several people for the position. Of course, we're going to hire three people. All the candidates that we interviewed were very good. This candidate here is Mike Marshall. Mike's been with the Police Department for about seven years now as a reserve. In that time that he's worked here, he's done a good job. He's professional, he works when he's called upon, he takes orders really well. So, I want to recommend that we recommend Mike Marshall. First, though, he has to do a PAT test, a psych test and a physical first before he completes all this. After he completes that, there was a form that I brought up to the office here the other day that the Board of Selectmen have to sign because he'll work on a waiver. The academy meets March 21st, and what they do is they sign, the committee meets and they allow people to work in a full-time position and they can work up to 270 days as an officer. After that, they have to, they should have to attend academy. But Mike's going to be attending probably in July, that's the next academy. Academy's now really been trying to book academies, they haven't done any of them right now, they just started one in Randolph, they started one in Plymouth, and the next available one will be Randolph, and he'll go in July. So, he'll have enough time that, you know, that 270 mark, that he can do that. So, but he'll have to complete all that, and if he doesn't complete that, I've always said that if he doesn't get those three, if he fails them, we'll have to go on and choose another candidate. But, I don't think that's going to happen. I know Mike is from the military, he's been in the military quite a while, he can talk to you about that a little bit. But, I'd like to make a recommendation that the Board appoint Mike Marshall as a patrolman for the Dyton Police Department.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the Chief's recommendation and appoint Michael Marshall to the position of patrolman, contingent on completion of his PAT, psychological and physical tests.
Okay. I'll step down a second, that motion. All faves say aye.
Aye.
And what about the...
Congratulations.
He has, once he completes those, he'll stop work down here. So, we have to set the physical up, which I think has been done. PAT test, they meet only on Thursdays, they have a practical, then they have the one that you have to do. So, that's coming up next week, I believe, or the week after. So, Michael will be starting either the last week of March or the first week of April, so.
Let's do the waiver, I don't have a copy of that waiver. The waiver, please. Yeah, I thought we could move it up and do it now so you can explain what that is.
Okay.
Mike, would you like to say a few words?
Sure.
Tell us about yourself.
You sure can.
Uh-oh. You have to give permission to use Bob's podium.
This is my response. I'm Mike Marshall, I grew up in the town, I went to Dyton, Rehoboth. I joined the Navy back in 96, spent years, nine years in the Navy and continued on when I got back here. I'm now part of the Mass Air National Guard, has an intelligence analyst, I work mostly signals intelligence. Like the Chief had mentioned, I do, I've been on the department since 2011. You know, I look forward to coming back and working with these guys, it's been a great time. Strong leadership, it's a nice place to work, so Dyton's always been home to me, so it's going to be nice to hang my hat here.
Excellent.
Yep.
Hey, you got two awesome ideas.
Awesome. Yeah, I was stationed in Norfolk on the Theodore Roosevelt Aircraft Carrier.
Nice, yeah.
Now he's in the National Guard, so he covers all those other positions.
Yeah, exactly.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Welcome back.
Thanks.
Congratulations to you guys, to my family.
Do you live in town now?
I live in town now.
Oh, okay.
Okay. You want to do your thing, or...
I'll do my thing.
Sue's going to swear, swear him in.
And I've known Michael since he was...
Yeah, I can remember where they were.
We lived where our neighbors on, Bar Street, Prospect Street area, and went to school with his mom and his aunt, so I've known Michael a long time. I can tell you some stories about when they were kids. Michael, right here. You saw him swear there, you're faithfully in, pops, just shy before all the duties, covered a funny, as a Dyton patrolman in the town of Dyton, of course, the laws of the Commonwealth of Mass, and the bylaws of the town of Dyton, so hope you're happy.
I do.
Congratulations.
It's always nice to see a Dytonian step in these positions, you know the town. Congratulations.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we take Agenda Item 8G out of order.
Okay, I'll step down a second. Faves say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the request from Chief McDonald for a temporary waiver of police training for Officer Marshall.
I will step down and second that. Keith, you want to tell us a little bit about what this waiver is about?
Yeah, what it is, is the academy allows someone to work on a waiver up to 270 days before they attend academy in a full-time capacity officer. What I have to do is the packet that I have to send to him, I have to send that signed by the Board of Selectmen, I have to send a certificate that he attended Reserve Academy, that he qualified in firearms, which I got from Greg Steele, who's the firearm instructor, a CPR card that he has to have, and his, there's one more. I think it's...
His tests?
Physical, maybe, his thing that he had, yeah, appointment letter, I'm sorry, appointment letter, thank you, Mike. Yes, appointment letter, who knows. So, I want to get that out tomorrow morning because they meet the 21st, and I already talked to the woman who does that, and she wanted to know if we were going to have someone on a waiver, and my secretary had let her know that we are going to do that. So, I can get that off in the morning, should be good to go once a committee meets, which is March 21st.
Okay. How long is the training at the academy?
Academy? I think that that class starts July 23rd, and I know they were talking about cutting the academy down, I'm not sure if Randolph did that, but the academy generally goes six months.
Oh, okay.
But, I know they've been talking about reducing the number of weeks to shorten it up, but I don't know if this Randolph has, but, you know, it's a long process, they were a long time. You know, it's, it's...
You guys, we're going through it, it's not easy, but. It's been a part of...
I know Mike a long time, too, when he was a kid, too, and like Sue said, I remember chasing him around with my nephew and another kid during North Dyton days when they rode their bikes around, and, but other than that, they were good kids.
Did you chase him or...
I knew you were waiting for that.
You straightened him out?
Yes. Very good. But I'm happy for him, and he deserves it.
Great. Oh, I'm sorry. Excellent.
Thank you, Board.
Well, thank you. Congratulations again.
Welcome to Dyton.
Yeah. You can stay if you want, but, you know, I'm...
Thank you very much.
No, it's a school night, and they'll be, school's being session tomorrow, guys.
I promise you Sunday, so...
Not going to be a snow day.
Thanks, I'm doing...
You, too.
Well, we don't have any public... We don't have anybody in the line, so I guess we have no public input tonight.
Isn't it crazy, we go from like a packed house and...
Well, I think the weather does.
Yeah.
They decided not to wear the coat and tie tonight because the weather didn't call for it. Anyways, let's go to the Town Administration Report.
So, my report tonight is a little bit longer than normal, so we've had a pretty active last couple of weeks. The Cannabis Task Force, which is made up of a variety of positions in town, had their first meeting, we've organized. The chairman is Kathy Spencer, who's the resident-at-large member, and I signed on to be the clerk. And our first order of business was to determine our mission, we've had some, Mr. Campachico had provided an example from a small town in Maine, so we looked at that, accepted the language to review, and we'll be putting together our own mission and then just getting started. Our next meeting is the 22nd, excuse me, of this month, and we'll be able to have digested the guidelines that were received yesterday from the state. So, that's where that is. Okay.
So, when do we need to move on this, so we know the most of the deadlines?
Most of the deadlines are for the state. What we should be doing, in my opinion, at the local level is zoning, just finding where in our town we find it suitable to have an adult-use marijuana dispensary. And while we're talking about it, also where we'd like the medical overlay to be as well for medical dispensaries. That's, to me, is what we should, how we should be handling it at the local level. I have not read through all of the guidelines, and basically, they get permitted through the state, these individuals, these businesses, so it really just kind of falls down, but to me, I think the most important thing that we can do to have any sort of control is to zone it, and then at town meeting, I will be asking you to put on the warrant when we do open that up, the 3% local tax option for us to gain some revenue from there.
I did hear the report on the news yesterday from the chairman of the committee, the state committee, and I was relieved to hear, you know, well, first they said all the regulations have been passed, so forth and so on, but then they said now, everything is up to the local community to decide what they want to do. I was relieved to hear that, because there's a lot of misinformation about, once they agreed to everything, we just had to do it, and that's not what he said yesterday, so that's good.
And I think local, local regulations are better, it's a better reflection of, especially where many of these votes were very close.
But Dyton voted to allow adult-use marijuana, so we, am I correct in saying that we are not, we cannot ban it or just stop it?
We could ban it if you wanted to go that route. I personally just would advise against that because it was voted yes here, but there's a series of steps we could follow if you'd like to.
There's also a chance for a moratorium, isn't there?
There is a chance for a moratorium, we could put one in, but by the time we developed a moratorium, had our public hearings, voted on it at town meeting, submitted it to the Attorney General's Office, had them receive it, you know, return it, that it was okay, we would, I believe, would already have applications in to locate here. And anybody that did that before our moratorium took effect would be grandfathered in. So, that's why I would rather expend our energy on zoning it, because we can, I don't want to block it, but make sure it's going in an appropriate location, and that we're okay with it.
Great, thank you.
Any, any other on that? I'm sure we'll have more once we read through these guidelines, but, okay. So, this is not due to any of your packet. I'll leave one for Brett when he's back. This is my spreadsheet. I reviewed the policy manual that the town of Dyton had, there was just a variety of items in there. In order to use this, what I've just given you, you do need a copy of that manual. Do both of you have that? I didn't print it out just in, the big, the thick policy man...
There was only one that was floating around, to the best of my knowledge.
I have it electronically, I'll print both a copy, print two copies.
Well, Brett, two copies.
Well, I commandeered Brett, so yes, I probably should print a new one. So, what I did was I, you can read this, but for the benefit of the public, there's the policy title, the purpose of the policy, and my recommendation. Some of these we've already done with just the different policies we've gone through. I did request feedback from department heads, and I sat down with a select few where they would really be impacted by any policy that was provided to them, mainly Mr. Ferry, who had quite a few in here, the fire chief, the police chief, and some of my recommendations are to continue working with them. Another recommendation was the stormwater policy be given to the Stormwater Committee, and I know that they're working on it because Selecting Goulart has done her due diligence on it. So, this is just, what I envisioned for this is for you to just take this under advisement, review, and at a future meeting, we'll discuss it. So, that's that, and I'll have those copies for you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Make a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we take the policy, the policy manual review under advisement, and we will be discussing each policy as they come up at future meetings, is that what we're going to do?
I was just going to give you this and the policy document, but we can do that if you'd like.
Well, if, where, for example, where you've put recommendations in here...
Yes, yes.
If we read through it and want some kind of a, say, in other words, yeah, we agree you should strike that, but you know what, we should probably add this. So, I think if we have any of those, we'll probably discuss them one at a time.
Sure.
Or group it.
We could even group by code.
Yeah, if they're small ones, right, yeah.
So, I think if...
Otherwise, we'll be here all night talking about it.
Right. If it works for the Board, if the chairman and I got together and grouped them appropriately, and then we can kind of have a schedule.
Yeah, so we don't come and call, right?
Sure. But that's a good idea, thank you.
Okay. So, we take them under advisement.
Thank you very much.
You got a second, now.
Library...
No, you didn't, because we didn't vote.
Step down a second. All faves say aye.
Aye.
Sorry, I thought you voted as well. I accompanied our library director, Jocelyn Tavars, at the Library Legislative Day at the State House yesterday, and we had a wonderful visit. We were able to talk to the Massachusetts Library Building Committee and get some feedback on our proposal right now, there's a renovation proposal, we're number 21, I think, in the list of funding. So, funding's not coming anytime soon, but we're in the pipeline for the grant, it's a little over half that the town would receive. So, we just had a great time up there, talking to them about what our needs are for the library, and we also were able to sit down with Representative Hadad, who is on the Library Caucus at the state and is just an all-around great representative to have. So, we, she was gracious enough to sit down with us, and she will eventually be headed down here to visit our library and see what we can do to help them out. So, that's just a future FYI, but it was a great visit, and I'm happy that Jocelyn let me accompany her.
Yeah, good, good, great. What thing are you doing there?
Tremont Street and Old Somerset Avenue, the intersection, as you are aware, we made some quick improvements to that revolving signage, we had some residents come in and share, or write in and share their opinions, and I'm thankful for that. One resident that actually had come here, Mr. Ferry did visit her and discuss her concerns, so he's addressed moving those signs back a little bit, which are the stop-ahead signs. But I've also sat down with Serpide and asked them, basically, how much is an engineering study? Because I know that our hours are precious right now, they're doing a lot of work on a lot of different items, and there is some assistance available through Mass DOT pays them to do local assistance, so we could have no cost to the town, we would just need a letter from the Board of Selectmen sending to Serpide that we would like them to explore options for this intersection for improvements. So, if the Board is looking amenable to that...
We'll sign it.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we have the Town Administrator prepare a letter to Serpide requesting assistance with the engineering study at the intersection of Tremont Street and Old Somerset Avenue.
Can I step down a second? All faves, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
You know, I really noticed, since, most of the time, I don't notice because I stop there, but I got to tell you, when, especially at night, what you see ahead of you is open road.
Right.
And what the lady that was, that lives on Tremont Street that mentioned the black and yellow sign at the end of, on Williams, if we could put those markers, because those signs were the reflectors, I kept looking at it and I'm thinking, I see an open road in front of me.
It's the hill.
I saw this.
That's why the stop-ahead's are so important, because you can see them before, but you're right.
But even as you start down, it's wide open.
I think those yellow signs with the arrows, because I saw, I did the same thing, I drove down there, paid a lot of attention to what it looked like, so it could be a little deceiving.
Tom and I talked about that specifically, because I said, oh, because he said we need to create a visual wall. Well, what more of a wall than that yellow sign with the arrow?
With the black tape.
When you are, right, when you're driving and you're right there, what's right in front of you is that driveway.
It's an open space.
So, we, it wouldn't be, it would be askew, your arrow would be askew. I still think it would help, but I defer to him, he's excellent.
Even if you didn't have the arrow, if you just covered those guardrails with that tape, you're going to, I mean, that will show. The other thing I thought about is, if you're on Interstate 95 approaching the 195 exit to come towards Seekonk, East Providence...
Okay.
You, way back, you see a sign that says something like 195 Cape Cod, whatever, two miles, and as you get closer to Thurbers, I think it says it's one mile or something. But as you approach that, it's a, it's a two-lane exit, but before you even get there, in the first right travel lane, painted on the road is a huge red, white and blue...
Stop sign, yeah.
Not a stop sign.
Oh, no, a directional.
195 thing.
Yes, yeah.
And it's, even though it's a two-lane exit, that really shows up. So, I don't know if we could paint the road, but it was just something I thought of.
We can, we can paint the road.
Sure.
But, stop, with stop ahead.
We'll talk to Tom.
The other, it came out of Serpide as maybe a speed bump, but I feel like that would just launch them further into the pool.
They don't like speed bumps.
On a public road, no, it's a nightmare.
And anybody that's going to go through it is not going to know the speed bump is the way it's going to keep going.
And what she's saying, you're putting a mab on.
Just launch, launch them in, yeah, so...
Those are all good ideas, so.
And they'll come up with more, they'll do the study and they'll come up with more, so that's a good idea.
These may be just temporary fixes.
Right, exactly, it's just to help for now while we figure out the real plan, or the concrete plan. See what I did there? Okay. Complete streets. So, one of the first things I did when I got here is Tom Ferry and I drafted a scope of services for design work for three intersections on the prioritization plan for complete streaks, and I just want to let you know that those are up and running, he's almost done with the third intersection, so two out of three are done, and just to report that we're moving ahead on those.
Are there's going to be changes in intersections, or engineering changes, or something?
The third one is the most difficult, and that's Pearl, over by St. Nicholas's Church, Pearl Street and...
Spring Street.
Spring Street, thank you. And so, that's actually realigning it, it's kind, it's a, it almost looks like somebody kind of dragged the intersection and made it askew, so what this would do is realign that. The other two intersections are mostly sidewalks-based and would provide some, Center Street and then...
Somerset Avenue, behind George Joe's, going down to hook up with Main Street.
They're both there?
What's that?
Where's the other?
Oh, Center, Center Street.
Center Street from the corner over to the entrance to Stone Gate.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
You know, that, that intersection at, at, actually, it's Warner Boulevard, Spring Street and Pearl Street, has always been a problem, because there used to be a blinking red light on Warner Boulevard and a yellow light the other direction. It kept getting wiped out because it was on an island. Then they suspended it from whatever, okay? But the island is a problem, because if you're in a big truck, I've seen big trucks go to the left of the island, the first time it happened, I'm thinking, oh my goodness, what's he doing? But he couldn't possibly make the left turn without, with the island, because the trailer went over, so he would make it on the wrong side. But that intersection's been troubled.
That must have been horrifying, to see a giant truck like that, to be on the wrong side of the road.
When I was on Warner Boulevard coming up, and it did towards me, it was like your attention. I thought the guy had been drinking, but then I, somebody told me, no, he can't make the turn.
It is, it's definitely in the way. So, those are up and running, and that's my report. Thank you.
Trying to get out of here before the snow starts, but...
I know.
Okay, well, business and a harassment policy, the first reading.
We've gone through our edits, and this is your first reading? I would recommend that you don't read the whole thing, and if anybody wants to see it, we can put it up on our website, we can post it on Facebook.
I think that makes the most sense, it's a very, it's a very long, you know, many, many pages, so I think what we'll do is we'll, we'll put it up on the website, we'll remind people about it, but if you go on the website and take a look at it, we'll also probably put it up on Facebook and a few other places that people visit, so.
And you know what, if we could, let's, let's photo some front and back and leave them in the foyer as a draft, if somebody wants to come in Town Hall, because they don't, they don't go to our website.
Good idea.
It'll be there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Okay, the next thing we need to do is ratify a declaration of state of emergency for the town of Dyton. And this, this has to do with the storm that we had over the weekend. The governor declared a state of emergency on Friday, so we, I declared as the chairman of the Board, a state of emergency on Friday as well, and so, and I informed the other two members of the Board, and Ms. Aaronstein is also, and so now we just need to ratify that. Let me just read what it, how this reads. "A declaration of local emergency Friday, March 2, 2018, by the authority of the Board of Selectmen, whereas a coastal storm emergency has been declared by the Governor of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts on Friday, March 2, 2018. And subsequently, the chairman of the Dyton Board of Selectmen issued a declaration of local emergency on that same day to the numerous, due to the numerous downed trees, power outages flooding of many residents' property and the damage to the roof of Old Town Hall. You haven't seen it, half the roof is gone over there. Said storm emergency poses imminent threat to the safety of persons and property within the boundaries of the town of Dyton. Now, therefore, we, the Board of, of, the Town of, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Dyton hereby ratify the decision of the chairman declaring a state of emergency in Dyton beginning March 2, 2018. Said local emergency will continue until the Governor of the Commonwealth and the other side declare the coastal storm emergency has passed. The Selectmen of the downtown of Dyton commit the entire resource of the town government to public protection and relief for the duration of this emergency, and hereby request the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency and mutual aid entities to provide assistance as necessary. Emergency resource accounting is in effect." So, that's...
Okay, the only thing I want to suggest is, where it says that the, subsequently, that the chairman of the Dyton Board of Selectmen, in consultation with Chris McGee's title, emergency...
Preparedness Director.
Yeah. I would insert that in there, and I would add Chris as a signatory to this, just so that we have all of that. Because I know the last time, well, the time I was involved, it was actually the fire chief who, well, who was the emergency manager, actually submitted all the paperwork, so we want to make sure he signs off.
He is actually, just to inform you both, he's working on that right now, some department heads have already submitted their paperwork, and we're just getting our ducks in a row, so he's doing that now.
Okay.
It follows suit.
If you want to make that...
Mr. Chairman, I move that we vote to ratify, excuse me, the declaration of local emergency on March 2, 2018, following the similar declaration from the governor, with the addition of Chief, the title for, what is his title?
Emergency...
With the addition of the emerg...
Emergency Management Director.
Emergency Preparedness Director be inserted after, in consultation with, where it says Board of Selectmen, in consultation with the Emergency Preparedness Manager, okay?
In my original declaration, which I did by email, that was in there.
Right. Right. I know Chris participated.
But it's not, yeah, it's not a, it's not a decision that the chairman of the board would make independently. It takes a lot of input.
And that we add, uh, Chief McGee's signature along.
Okay, I'll step down a second. That motion. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And when you got this on there. Okay, discussion of the selectmen's meeting schedule. And what we've kinda are thinking, uh, who came up with the preliminary thought that, you know, we meet, Mallory actually came up with the thought, I think.
Yeah.
Because we meet every week. And, and so what, what you end up with, you end up with finishing this meeting tonight and then right away, you're getting ready for next week's meeting. And it's very time consuming and it's very disruptive to the workflow. So, um, we'll simply wait for Selectmen Zagravas to come back to weigh in on it. But, uh, that's what we're thinking. And, uh, and I think, you know, uh, you probably don't remember, but last summer, when we go on our summer schedule, we ended up meeting most every week anyway. So this would be, we would, we would try to do it. The meetings might be a little longer and some things might have to get delayed a little bit. But I think it makes a good common sense and management sense to do this so we can get things done during the week. So we'll table this until Mrs. Zagravas.
I, I did speak with him.
Yeah.
And he just said he was fine with by monthly.
Oh, he was?
By weekly meetings.
Okay.
Oh, so, okay.
So.
But I think you should be here to vote on it.
Sure.
So Mister Chairman, I make a motion that we table voting on the Selectmen's meeting schedule until next week, when we have a full board.
Can I step down a second there? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Uh, yeah, I think we'll also prepare for next week when this would go into effect and what, so we'll have a new meeting schedule.
Right. Cause I'm sorry, I don't want you to do it yet.
I know, I don't, I don't think we need, you can do it yet either, because we got a lot of things going on here in the next few weeks, so. Okay.
The, the other thing too is, um. If something comes up that we have to meet, just like we did last summer, we had meetings every week, for a period. Then we had a little break. But something comes up, you just have to schedule it.
Kinda do what you gotta do.
Right.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the office relocation discussion. And here's what I think I would like to do, but I'll wait to your input. Uh, I think, I think we meet, have a department head meeting tomorrow. And maybe we should talk to department heads and get all that input and then tell them what we're thinking and then come back next week with final.
I'm completely, I totally accept that. Um, I just do need to mention that they're looking to order the sign for the building.
Yep.
And, uh, they wanna list the departments that are on it. And, um, the building inspector showed me a sign.
Yep.
And listed on it was Conservation, Zoning Board of Appeals, Board of Health, Veteran Service Officer, and the building inspector. Um, so just to keep that in mind as we go forward. He did not order it. I told him, we have to wait, um.
That sounds good to me, but I think, I want to hear what everybody else has to say.
Well, especially Conservation, because all the other ones know or have kind of been waiting to move over. But Conservation, uh, I'm not even sure how they feel on it, so.
Uh, Mister Chairman, I make a motion that we table action on the office relocation discussion until next week.
Okay. I'll step down a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, the next one is approve and sign the warrant for town election. And we have the warrant here. Um, and we read it to you. Um, to either of the constables of the town of Dayton, City, uh, Town of Dayton, County of Bristol, greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify the inhabitants of the town of Dayton qualified to vote in elections to meet at the Dayton Elementary School for both precincts one and two on Saturday, the seventh of April, two thousand and eighteen at seven AM. And then and there to elect by ballot the following offices. Selectmen, one selectman for three years, town moderator for one year, assessor for three years, uh, two members for the Dayton Rehoboth Regional School District Committee, members for three years, planning board member for five year, five years, public library trustee for three years, parks and recs commissioner for three years, sewer commissioner for three years, housing authority number for five years, tree warden for three years. For the purpose, for this purpose, the polls will be open at seven AM and shall close at five PM. And you are directed to serve this warrant by posting attested copies thereof at each of the post offices, at the Town Hall, and at the main fire station, all in said Dayton, seven days at least before the time of said meeting. Hereof fail not make due return of this warrant with your doing thereon to the town clerk at the time and place of said meeting. That sounds like old English stuff. Okay.
Uh, Mister Chairman, um, I move that we approve and sign the warrant for the annual town election, uh, on Saturday, September the, excuse me, April the, April the seventh, from seven AM to five PM as requested.
Okay, I'll step down a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
If you want to see a ballot, uh, they're posted outside the clerk's office, so you can see who's on the ballot and, uh.
And just keep in mind, everybody, these, the STEAM Expo at Dayton Rehoboth is the same day. That's from ten AM to two PM. So maybe you can come and vote and then go by to high school and see what we've got to offer.
Good idea. Okay, do we have recommendation from the open space committee for appointments?
We need to table that this week. They weren't able to meet tonight.
Okay. Oh, that's right.
Uh, Mister Chairman, I move that we table action on the recommendation for open space committee appointments until next week.
Step down a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, we have a, uh, reserve fund transfer request from the assessors' office, um.
This came about, they filed it with the Fin, Finance Committee first, and then when we were at the Finance Committee meeting, we noticed.
Yeah.
So it's just, it's already been approved by the Finance Committee.
Okay, so this just requires our, our approval. So this is a requested amount of a hundred ninety-five dollars and seventy-four cents. Uh, we transferred to, uh, account five three oh two, which is computer fees. Um, and the amount requested will be used for a balance account. We did not budget enough money to cover, uh, it's a VEDAR, called VEDAR software for the, for the abatement and the exemption software, so.
Okay, it's already been approved by the FINCON?
Yes.
Okay. Um, Mister Chairman, um, see now that we recommend, um, uh, Mister Chairman, I move that we acknowledge the, um, approval of the Finance Committee of the request from the Board of Assessors for a transfer from the reserve fund in the amount of one hundred ninety-five dollars, seventy-four cents for account five three zero two, computer fees.
I will step down a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, the next order of, we already did the police, the next order of business is, uh, I put together, uh, our town administrator had, had done this, or they had done it up in her former town at West Breachwater. And just so that we have some consistency and, and we're all on the same page about how the, the, um, Board of Selectmen will operate, uh, in this, in this meeting and some of the other duties, um, we kinda, kinda worked with, with Mallory and we put this together. Uh, we'll certainly want to, uh, discuss it for the next meeting when Selectmen Zagravas is here. But, um, it might be a good idea just to go to read down through it. Uh, what do you think?
Sure.
Okay.
I just wanted to, Selectmen Zagravas has requested that he be present. So, um, just what you had just said.
Yeah.
Just no vote taken.
I'll just read it, I'll just read it so the public can understand it and then we'll, we'll vote on it, uh, discuss and vote on it next week. But, okay, so this is, it's, it's called the Rules of Order for the Board of, this is a draft, by the way, too. Uh, Rules of Order for the Board of Selectmen, Town of Dayton, Massachusetts. Number one, at the first meeting of the Board of Selectmen meeting, after the town's annual election, the senior member of the board will declare all positions vacant. An election of a board chair and a clerk will be conducted as the first order of business. Okay, number two, the role of the chairman will be fa, be the following. Prepare the agenda in conjunction with the town administrator and will include items that the chairman reasonably anticipated will be discussed. Facilitate the Board of Selectmen meeting. Ensure or, that order is maintained with this Selectmen's meeting room. Any member of the board or others in attendance shall first be recognized by the chair before speaking. Remarks shall be confined to the issue under debate and shall avoid personalities. Ensure that all members of the board are given adequate opportunity to be heard. Keep the meeting moving forward and allowing all members to express their views freely. Steer the conversation away from discussion that is not relevant to the agenda item being addressed. In the absence of the chairman, the clerk shall serve as acting chairman. Number three, conduct the meeting. All members of the Board of Selectmen will be conduct, will be conducted in compliance with the Massachusetts Open Meeting Law. Means will begin promptly at the posted time. Any Selectmen who expects to be absent or late for a Board of Selectmen meeting shall notify the town administrator or the chairman of the Board of Selectmen as soon as possible. If an individual Selectman gives notice that they will be late for a meeting, at the chair's discretion or by majority vote, the meeting will be delayed up to fifteen minutes, except for scheduled public hearings, which need to, need to go when we, we post them forth. The chair will sure, ensure that no person will be allowed to speak more than once until all members have had an opportunity to express their position on a particular discussion. The agenda will generally be followed in the order that it was posted. However, the chairman will have the discretion to move items on the agenda that will better accommodate individuals becoming for the board or at the request of other board members. Uh, the generally structured, uh, as we do it now, a call, call to order, pledge of allegiance, town administrator report, old business, new business, correspondence, announcements, Selectmen's report, acknowledgements, approval of minutes, approval of warrants, and adjournment. Occasionally it might be something else in there, but that's generally what we, what I, what we're recommending we do. Any meeting, public hearing, or special session of the board recess, recess no later than eleven PM unless there is a unanimous vote of the board to extend that time. I assure you by that time, we're pretty well burned out, so. If an activity of normal occurrence dictates the, that approval of an item is required before the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Selectmen, the chairman will be authorized to issue an executive order of approval. The nature and rationale for such approval shall be immediately communicated to the other members of the board and will be included on the agenda for the next regularly scheduled meeting of the board. The chairman of the Board of Selectmen shall have the authority to declare a state of emergency for the town when an event requires immediate action by town departments to protect town assets, protect employees and residents from harm, and to ensure that public safety personnel have access to all areas of town. The nature and rationale for such declaration shall be immediately communicated to other members of the board and will be included on the agenda for the next regularly scheduled board meeting. Uh, these rules will be, will be reviewed mon, annually during the month of May. So that, that's it.
Could you give us copies of that, please?
I think you have it back.
Oh, it's in the package. Okay, fine. Uh, Mister Chairman, I move that we table action on the proposed rules of order until next week, until the next meeting.
I'll step down a second there. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. So the next one is a piece of correspondence we received from, uh, Jeffrey Wagner, who, um, is he, is, must be at the, at the Aggie.
He's a formal cassette recorder and he used to cover our meetings.
Oh, yeah, he's a neighbor from that. Anyway, so, so he's, he sent us an email. And what it says is, for those receiving, for those receiving those, it has been a while and I hope you're all well. As some of you may, may or may not know, I have been charged with helping Bristol Aggie restart a continuing education program. I suspect that many people who would, who would take a night class at the Aggie would be from Freetown, Burt, Dayton, or Berkeley area. That said, feel free to call or email me back on what kind of course would be of interest. Um, and he gives some examples like nature photography, yoga, gardening, or actually anything else that you might be interested in. So, uh, Jeff Wagner's number is five oh eight, nine oh four, two six four nine. That's five oh eight, nine oh four, two six four nine. And we'll have a, we'll have this up here in the office as well. So if anybody wants to, uh, come up and get the number, if you, if you didn't get it written down, it's available here. Okay. Do we have any other correspondence?
No.
That's it. Great. Okay. Uh, announcements.
Sure, I'll do it. Trash bags, shops, disposal containers, and recycling stickers are all for sale at the Board of Selectmen's office. Call five zero eight, six six nine, six four three one for more information. There are vacancies on the Development and Industrial Commission, Land Use Committee, Cultural Council, and the Capital Outlay Committee. The STEAM posium, S-T-E-A-M, stands for Learning and Careers in the Fields of Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Mathematics. Be held at Dayton Rehoboth Regional High School on Saturday, April the seventh, from ten AM to two PM at Dayton Rehoboth Regional High School. Dayton Lions Community Food Bank Distribution will be held on March twenty-fourth, eight AM, lower level of Town Hall. Tax forms are available at the library. I just want to make a mention on that STEAM posium, that XO I talked about, um, on same as election day. Um, the Town Stormwater Committee is going to be very active in this. And please stop by because we're gonna have information and some handouts. And this is something that we are preparing to, uh, provide information to all ages and all grade levels. Uh, and we're working with the school department as far as, uh, what they have included in their curriculum. And, uh, this is gonna be a general information, uh, session. But also, even if you don't have a student in the schools or at Dayton Rehoboth Regional, there are gonna be some very interesting, uh, programs that the students at the high school will put on. They're bringing in, um, professional engineers who will be available to talk to students who may be interested in going into some form of engineering. So especially those of you who have students that are sophomores, juniors, seniors, uh, headed for college, this would be a great opportunity to get information about potential careers and fields of study. So please try to come to that. This is the second one they've had. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Selectmen reports. Uh, let me start off. Uh, we, we have scheduled a meeting with Dr. Azar, the superintendent of, uh, Dayton Rehoboth, the Regional School District, uh, for tomorrow. And we're gonna, we're gonna talk about school security. I know there's a lot of concern out there about, about school security with the events that have gone on, uh, throughout the country, actually. So, um, we're just gonna have a discussion about that. This is gonna be an executive session. And the reason for that is, uh, we may have to discuss things that are, uh, could compromise the, uh, you know, the security issues over there. So however, when the meetings are, one of the things that I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Dr. Azar to do, along with our police chief, fire chief, uh, is to, uh, conduct, set up a, a community meeting, if you will, so that parents can be informed about, uh, as much as we can. And then, uh, also have the opportunity to ask questions. Uh, so everybody feels comfortable. School security is a very, is a very high priority of mine. I think it is of all, of Selectmen's who lack as well. And I'm sure , uh, Selectmen Zagravas, so we're very concerned about it. We just want to make sure our students are safe and, uh, and, uh, anything we can do to, to make that happen, we're gonna, we're gonna take the initiative to do it, so.
I think it's important that everyone also understand, all of the intimate details concerning school safety cannot be released to the public for, for obvious reasons. You're entitled to know that there are programs in place to ensure the safety of our children. But I can honestly say there will not be details. There have never been details, even when we had the last joint meeting. So, um, I, I guess you've gotta have faith and trust in the, in the leaders that we have and the positions that are responsible for this security.
And what I will, and what I will add to, we're gonna have this meeting tomorrow and then, you know, we will, you know, again, ask, ask for a community meeting. But we will share with you as much as we can to assure you, reassure you that, uh, our schools are safe. And if they're, and if we feel after meeting with Dr. Azar, that there's things we can do as a team, like schools, Selectmen, anybody else in, in town, uh, leadership positions, then we will move forward with those. But, uh, we'll give you a more general report, uh, probably next week, at next week's meeting, so. Okay, anything else you have? Okay. Give any acknowledgements?
No acknowledgements.
No acknowledgements. Approval of minutes, uh.
Mister Chairman, I move that the minutes of January twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen be approved.
Okay, I'll step down a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Approval of warrants.
Mister Chairman, I move that warrant thirty-six A dash eighteen in the amount of ninety-two thousand, three hundred ninety-eight dollars, sixteen cents payroll. Warrant thirty-six B dash eighteen in the amount of fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred five dollars and two cents accounts payable, be approved.
Okay, I'll step down a second there. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
That's a small warrant.
Yeah, right.
Knock on wood.
Short, short, regular meeting, too. Um, so, uh, at this point, um, I will accept the motion to adjourn from our regular meeting. And, uh, we will also accept a motion to go into executive session.
Mister Chairman, I move that we enter an executive session under the provisions of Mass General laws, chapter thirty-eight, sections twenty, section twenty-one A, three.
Okay, I'll step.
To conduct, uh, discussion regarding, um, negotiations and a pilot agreement.
Okay, I'll step down a second there. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Roll call?
Aye.
Okay, we're gonna go, we're in executive session and we will not.